Good evening, a call to order tonight, the special meeting of the Board of Education, Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. Will all please rise for the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And two public places which is one nation.
Interpad, individual liberty and justice for all. Just a few pieces of business for all the board members that are present, which I believe all of us are on here. Please make sure that you're voting in the Google chat so that Donna will go ahead and see that we've all voted. And then also just a reminder that the Google chat is live for everybody to say. So that's, that's on there for, for all of the audience that's watching to say. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry, Donna, do you want me to type it as well or is my verbal okay? I just typed it, just in case. Okay. Um, okay, I'm gonna pass it over now for an update on the reopening plan and the fully remote learning.
Yep, so I just want to take everybody back to what occurred very quickly last week. Just to kind of give context to what we're talking about. So a week ago, we met with Dr. Gelman and we met with her on Tuesday and then subsequently met with her on Wednesday. And there was a sense of urgency on her part and she recommended that we close. Part of what she said, and I think it's really important, is that she based, she based her recommendation on statistical data. And she said, the current rate of transmission and she was concerned that in order to mitigate the spread and allow for proper advanced planning, she urged all school districts to revert to a remote model. And then she talked about the different models. She called one, the college model, which was really asking schools to close right after Thanksgiving and then reopen for in-person instruction through Martin Luther King. So that would go all the way through January 19th. Her second model was an interim, remote, in-person, and then back to remote model, which is the model that, you know, after very quickly speaking with the board, we decided, look, this makes most sense because from the beginning of our plan, our goal is always to have students in the building. So based on that information, we, I recommended that we go to the interim remote model, which allows us to be off, I'm sorry, to be remote for two weeks, then come back into school and then go on our break and then go back to a remote and then come back to in-person school. So that, that's the first part of it. The second part was, well, what does the school district do, right? What, what are, how are we going to, what's our plan? And so we went back to our plan. We, we had a discussion with multiple stakeholders, but we went back to our original plan. And in August, we planned that if this were to happen, that we would go back to the first two weeks, which was our, you know, you had periods one through nine on the first day and then you had sort of this alternating day, Tuesday through Friday. And that was the agreement that we had in. And so I just want to remind everybody that that was part of the reopening plan that the Board of Education approved. And so when we went to this issue, because right now we're saying that we're hopefully going to be able to reopen, we do know that there is a possibility, and I said it at the last board meeting, that if the numbers are high, that we may remain closed, right? We may end up doing the college model, even though that's not our plan, but, but that's the possibility. And so we came up with and we talked about doing the two, first two-week remote model. And so I'm gonna have Eric speak a little bit about that. But, but I just wanted to give context to how we got to where we are.
So, so basically, the, the model is the model that we, we kind of put together with the, the reopening committee at the, you know, at the, the end of last school year and at the beginning of the school year, where basically we sat down and we looked at all of the various scenarios. And it's the model that we had in place for the first two weeks of the school year. You may recall that we, we started off the school year remote. And basically, it was a day that depending upon elementary, middle school, or high school, started at, at a few different times of the day depending upon the start times of the actual school. At the elementary level, it was either eight thirty or nine o'clock. And at the middle school or high school, it was nine o'clock or nine thirty. At the middle school and the high school, it was a period one through four day with a check-in in the, in the afternoon on each of the days. That was Tuesday through, it was one through four on Tuesday and Thursday, five through nine on Wednesdays and Fridays. On Mondays, it was a synchronous day where the students went through periods one through nine on an abbreviated schedule. At the elementary level, they had a consistent schedule, Monday through Friday, where they had a series of whole group Google meets and small group Google meets staggered throughout the day based upon the, the different content areas. We decided that we were gonna start off the school year with that model because we knew that there was going to be the possibility that at some point the district was going to have to close its buildings and we were going to go fully remote. So we made the decision that before we started in-person instruction, we were gonna do two weeks of this model to get everybody on board. We had started with our one-to-one initiative and getting all of our students Chromebooks to make sure that everybody had the ability to be able to log in live, combined with the, the rationale of the, the reopening committee that having students on their computers all day long, both live synchronous and asynchronous is, is a long day for students. One of the questions that I'm being asked now is, how come there's a, a reduction of instructional time? And one of the questions that was asked at the last Board of Education meeting was about asynchronous remote Mondays, does that count as a day of attendance? When the state released their guidance, they said to school districts that we have to offer both a blend of asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities because of the remote model being a challenge for some kids to be able to access it live synchronously. So we put together this model for the first two weeks and it was the decision of the committee that in the event that we had to shut down, we would return to that model. And that's basically what we had talked about for the two weeks following Thanksgiving.
Hey, can, can I just say something, Eric? It's not only, um, it's not only for just if we shut down, it's when the district shuts down, right?
Correct.
It's, it's, it's a full district closure, not intermittent closure as we've had because unfortunately, we've had some schools that we've had to close for either a week, a couple of days. It depends upon, and that's really COVID-specific to the building. But this is in specific to the district-wide closure, which is what we're doing right now.
Right. But so why do we use a different format for intermittent closures as opposed to a, a formal full district closure?
Because, sure. So Anthony, the reason we do that is because, let, let me give you an example. If the high school was closed, but the middle school was open, remember that we also have shared staff. So everything has to be the same. So if I'm a teacher at the high school and I'm running a different schedule, but I'm also working at the middle school, we have a problem. So we always have to be on the same page. And that's why they continue, even though the high school is closed, is on remote for a week, they have to stay with the same schedule. It isn't until we have a full district closure that we can do what we're doing right now. That's why there's two different plans.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I supposed to raise hand? I, I got knocked off. Okay, well, listen, since I got you, can I just continue? So is there any potential for us to not go back to the original plan that you guys had agreed on and instead sort of do a?
We evaluate that? So Anthony, I think, I, I think the beauty of what we've done and I, and I really want to commend, it has nothing to do with me, I commend the people who were on the task force. There were board members, there were over a hundred people who were part of that. I think the beauty about this is that we are always reevaluating, right? I think this was a surprise, which unfortunately, you know, we learned from one day to the other. But I do think that if there is a concern or a discussion that we need to have, absolutely. I think we should reconvene some of our committees and sit down and say, listen, what makes most sense? Because I think what we need to really be cognizant of is that the decisions that were made in August were really stakeholders. We had a lot of different stakeholders who were involved and they shared what they thought. So I think it's important to say, if, look, if we're thinking, hey, maybe this is not the best thing, then we should go back to our committees and have a very quick meeting and make some decisions about, you know, the, the potential next closure, which is in, in January. So I think I answered your question, right? I, the answer is yes.
And, and part of that is also in, including the kids in that, in that discussion. Because I mean, even as recently as, as last week, we, we have regular meetings with groups of students, the Student Engagement Task Force. We, we have a number of different student groups and, and we also gather feedback with them about the scheduling piece as well. So, you know, they were involved in the decision-making over the summer. I mean, a, an example of that was when we had talked about possibly staggering the, the opening of school, having elementary open first and maybe delaying the opening at the secondary level. And the students were like, we, we want to open K-12 across the board. There were discussions about the scheduling piece. And, and I think that it, it's important, as Elsie said, to involve all of the stakeholders in that rash, in that rationale behind some of those decision-making.
All right.
Michael and Dan have their hands raised. So once Anthony's finished, go to Michael and then to Dan, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm jumping off because I'm sorry, I jumped in, I got knocked off. I came back in, I didn't realize the rule. No, I got more questions, but I will go back in line now.
Okay.
Michael, raise your hand, Anthony, now.
I'm trying to be like Chris.
Okay. I guess part of the concern was it was not very clear that we were going to a modified schedule. It wasn't clear at the board meeting. And when the emails came out, we started being contacted right away by parents who said, why are we throwing so much confusion into the mix here? And it makes sense what, what happened earlier in the year for the first two weeks because that was an adjustment period, it was needed. But now to throw the kids back into a four, five-period day, whatever it exactly is, it doesn't really make sense. And, you know, the kids are getting worried. I have a, a child and, you know, high schooler who is worried about, you know, taking tests and getting things done and falling behind on the work because the teachers will generally try to catch them up. And with this modified schedule, i- it's a bit of a challenge. And so, you know, I'm hearing from a lot of parents and that's the first time that I've actually started hearing from some parents that they're very confused with the schedule. And it was, it really kind of came out of nowhere. So I think there was an opportunity to communicate it at the meeting in a way that would be more meaningful, that parents knew we were fully remote, going backwards to that, but also explaining what it was because it was kind of so long ago.
I, I don't disagree with you, Michael. I think our last board meeting was a little bit more hectic and I wish that we could have been present or maybe even had this kind of a meeting because it didn't really lend itself. And at that time, remember, we were just, we were looking at a solution for each thing, right? The first piece, and that's why I kind of started this meeting with talking about, you know, we get, we get information on Tuesday and Wednesday that we need to close. And then we have to, so, and then we have to make a decision, what are we gonna do? So I think that at that meeting, and, and Stacy may have alluded to it, that we would go back to the five-day schedule and things of that nature. But to sit down and not go through all of that, go through our reopening plan. And, you know, and I do want to reiterate that that was part of our reopening plan that we shared and, and sent into the, to the state and got approval on. So it was our go-to, but I totally understand that maybe there should have been more communication in between. I think someone said, could you have just constantly reminded us that this is what, what could potentially happen? But I also want to go back to when you talk about stress and anxiety. I, I certainly understand that, but I also have students on the other side who are very anxious and overwhelmed. And we are going into what we call the winter months. And from an academic standpoint, we also go through a period where students really struggle emotionally. And so part of the thinking, and this is going back to August, part of the thinking was if we went to an extended closure, we didn't want our students to be in their rooms for seven to eight hours by themselves. And we didn't think that that was, that was sound. So I think that's part of the conversations that we had. And, and I really, again, am very grateful to the committee because they did all of this work. And so going back to Anthony's comment, I think that if there's some concern or people aren't sure, or there is this, you know, why don't we do something different? I think it's a really good opportunity for us to go back to the committees and discuss all, all those things. Because what I've learned during COVID is that you have one group that says this is terrible and horrible. And then you have another group that says, if you do something different, then it's, it's also terrible and horrible. So we, so there has to be a better balance and I think that really needs to be afforded a lot more time.
And, and I think, I think to, to Mr. Cirella's point, we, we grappled with that back and forth. I mean, there, there was a lot of conversation and I think that in the end, we, we settled with the, with what we had put into place with the reopening plan because that's the plan that we had put into place. And I think, you know, without having the, the ability to be able to fully vet some of these decisions with all of the stakeholders and play this out because we were on a shortened timeframe, combined with the concern that there may be the possibility of an extended closure after the fact, I think that that was what was sort of the, the piece of us saying, well, we did this work at the beginning. This is what we arrived at, this is what we are going to start with. And in the event that, you know, we're gonna, you know, we decide that we're gonna pull the committee together to put, you know, put everybody's heads together to see what we can possibly do moving forward. That, that's, that's always something that's on the table.
Well, I guess with that being said, the, you know, what I understood the opening plan to be, the reopening plan, was supposed to be temporary. And it's sounding like that we're falling back on that plan because we don't have a holistic plan ready for a fully remote environment. Because obviously getting through, say the governor closed schools for the rest of the school year, we wouldn't be able to function in a four-class day. So it sounds like we need to go back to the drawing board to redo it. But then we're not prepared for this environment that we're jumping into right now.
Um, I don't, I don't know if I would say we're not prepared because I'm gonna go back to the original plan. And the original plan, that was what we thought was the best thing, right? In September, we, we, meaning not only the Board of Education, but the task force, which was, you know, various groups of people. And there was, I want us to remember that there was a task force that was specifically for social emotional learning. And so that was a decision. I, I wouldn't say that that, we weren't prepared. What, what we are saying is that we, we experienced different things and that maybe that's something that we should look at. But I, I, I would respectfully disagree that it's not that we were not prepared because that's what we prepared at the time, right?
And I think, I under, I understand that, but we always knew it was a possibility, we may have to fully close. And that's what I'm saying, we don't seem to be prepared for. Because what's being said is that we have to go back to the task force now and relook at things. So we're not prepared for that next step. So I'm going to just, you know, put my hand down now, but that's my concern. And I don't think it's fully vetted. Yes, we were prepared to reopen school, but this next phase we weren't prepared for. Because a, a strategic plan, you know, to reopen needs to have a multi-phased event in case other contingencies arrive that are likely. And this was obviously one of them that was likely.
Okay.
I'll put my hand down. Well, I'm gonna start off piggybacking on, on what Mike said. And, uh, you know, I'm never demure about things. This was a reopening plan, we're open, it's over and done with. In my mind, that plan is, what, five months out? It was August. We have been going remote, going back and forth, making adjustments on the fly as times needed. And that's fine, that's understandable. For the past two weeks, we have had the high school kids, they were out for somebody who tested positive. They closed, they shuttered the building, students were sent home, they were remote. It was working. Every time we send kids home for a positive COVID, that, having them on remote four of the five days a week, live instruction was working no problem. I don't understand why we didn't revert to that, why we would revert back to, you know, a plan where they are receiving a hundred less minutes of seat time per class per week. And in my mind, I'm thinking, how can these teachers accomplish covering the curriculum if they don't get the amount of time that they usually get? I understand things come up here and there, but to lose a hundred minutes a week is a huge amount of time. They need to sit for a Regents exam, it hasn't been canceled yet. Do I hope that it's canceled? Sure, but it's New York State. They really don't make good decisions all around. So I'm not banking on them canceling the Regents and our kids are gonna need to sit for it. And the same kids in other districts within Orange County are taking the same exam. Now, I asked Ms. Rotucci to see if she could accumulate just what was going on in other districts. And from what she had presented me, I took a look through it. The only one that's doing this A-Day, B-Day while everybody is fully remote is Middletown. And in my mind, we're not aspiring to be Middletown, all right? We're aspiring to be one of the best districts in the county. So I've spoken with teachers, especially since last night with back-to-school night, and asked them about the curriculum. And they say they're, you know, they're either cutting out things or they're pushing through things, or they're, you know, shortening what they have, they're putting more onus on the students. And that's really not what we're about. Because in the end, we're really not, having them pass a Regents is secondary. In my mind, it's getting them the good education that they deserve. Elsie made mention for screen time. Now, I'm gonna disagree with that one. I know the moment most of these kids get off the computer, the first thing they do is go onto another electronic device. They're on Netflix, they're on TikTok, they're staring into something else under the sun. And so my concern about screen time is, has been evaporated because they really just, to them, they're always on a screen. And, you know, I think if you look at most of the people who are, who are working these days, you're sitting on a screen all day long. Now, it's not ideal, it's not what I would like to really see, but it, it's a fact of our situation. So to sacrifice educational screen time for TikTok screen time, although more enjoyable in some respects, is not really what I want. Hassler spoke about talking with the stakeholders. I happen to know that the sophomore class president reached out directly to Mr. Cassidy with his concerns about the change in schedule and the constant changing and the lack of, you know, being able to get through the curriculum. And his response to him was, well, that's the plan in the beginning, which I think is just a lousy answer. All right, we deserve to give the kids better than that. They don't need to hear, well, that's the plan, that's what we're gonna go with. Elsie has said constantly, we're reevaluating every two weeks, we're reevaluating every two weeks. It's the end of November, all right? At this point, we don't need to go back to a plan that was formulated over the summer before we could see how things work, before we could see how schools were functioning, lunches were being handled, kids were moving around hallways. We've moved past that. I also have a question of what, you know, there are ten less teaching hours per week according to that schedule that I've seen for secondary. Where they, from the high school, it's seven to nine, I guess, where teachers are not teaching classes. That's ten hours a week, all right? What are teachers doing for ten hours? All right, I understand that, you know, professional development is a valuable source for teachers to use to learn how to do things, to, to be more familiar with programs, to do lesson planning, all right? In a regular school year, a non-COVID school year, teachers get a one-period prep every day. They are now receiving ten hours of time. What's going on during that time? I'd like to really know. All of these things together, and, and again, I, I come off angry, but, and it's not directed at you guys, it's directed at the situation because I got kids in the school. I have kids, a, a son who I was baffled when he was upset that he was home for the next week and a half. And then he heard he was home for December, or most of December. He was pissed and I'm like, wait, I, I thought you liked being home. He's like, no, I want to be in school, all right? These kids need, as horrible of an interaction they get while they're in the building, they need to be going to the building, all right? They need to be waking up at six o'clock, six-thirty, to get their butts out of bed and go to school, all right? Not sleeping until nine, ten, eleven o'clock, all right? We owe them much, much more than we're giving them, all right? I think for going back to the committees, I don't even think we, we need to. I think at this point, I think the cabinet is well-suited to come up with a plan that is something we could do going forward, something that maximizes the time these kids have, because the time is disappearing. I can't believe it's already Thanksgiving, to be honest with you. It's just disappearing. And we need to make sure that we educate these kids the best they can, all right? I feel bad for the poor freshmen who have been in the building. I know Mr. Hassler provided me with the numbers. Been in the building fourteen times? That's their high school career, fourteen days in, in the school building. That's not good enough, all right? I want to see these kids, and this is just me speaking, I want to see these kids having live instruction, five days a week, every period, whether they are sitting at home or they're sitting in the building. It doesn't matter to me. That's my giant diatribe. Thank you for listening and I welcome any criticisms, comments, nasty words, et cetera.
So, so I, I think you said a lot of things, so I'm, I'm trying to catch. I tried to write notes, but you spoke too fast.
I'm sorry.
So, so I, here's the thing that you ended with. You ended with, I think that we should do this and we, and, and, and I, I respect that. But I think that one thing that we have done as a district to be able to get everybody's buy-in is to sit down as a committee and make these decisions and discuss this. Because what Dan Isrodi wants to do may be very different than what Don Talbot wants to do. And I don't even know what Don wants.
Listen, I, and again, I, you know, I am just a voice for people in the community. And, and, you know, I'm conveying the messages that they are sending to me, which is that they are, kids are being shorted on school, on their time in education, and they want more class time, more.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt for a second. So can we at least attempt to address those couple of questions that have come from that? Which, again, it's something that I'm hearing from the community as well, the lack of instruction time, the extra time that the teachers are getting for prep. Is that something that you guys can at least address as to, are, is Monroe Woodbury falling behind? Are teachers falling behind in their curriculum? Are we having to cut stuff out of the curriculum? I mean, these are all the things that if, and I'm, I'm taking Dan's, you know, abbreviated notes that I took as well. But are those some of the things that you can somewhat address, um, community?
I, I certainly want to, and I'll let Eric talk about it because he's the curriculum person. But I su, I do want to talk about cutting some of the curriculum. As a school superintendent, I meet with all my other colleagues. And, and, and here's, here's a thing that I want to reiterate. I don't compare myself to any other district. We do what we think is right in our district. So is there cutting of curriculum? Anybody who's an educator in the year 2020, in the school year 2020, 2021? Yes, because, because of the situation that we're in. But, but I can tell you that there are other ways that we have mitigated that. And, and the schedule that we currently have, even though it has less teaching time, there still is instructional time that's happening. And I'll let Eric speak about that, because maybe that's really important for you to know.
Sure, and, and there's, there's a, a variety of different things. I was having a conversation with a, with a parent earlier today who was saying to me, you know, how, how are you accommodating for some of these decisions? Because, you know, the kids are only physically seeing their teacher three days a week rather than the four days a week that they're going to be able to see them now. And, and there are a number of different things that, that teachers are doing. Some teachers are, are using, you know, the pre-recorded lessons that they're giving kids who they may not see on that specific day, the opportunity to be able to stay on, in sync with, with what the, the class is that's in session. If there, if it's a one-through-four day, the teacher may record one of their periods and post it into Google Classroom, so the kids that are five through nine have the ability to be able to stay on top of that. We've canceled midterm exams and since there's no January Regents exams, we won't be having the, the exam schedule at the end of January, which is shutting that, which shuts down the, the high school for an entire week. That's going to continue to be an instructional week now for kids. We're, we're doing everything that we can just in terms of scheduling to be able to, to make that happen. Are there things that are gonna have to be adjusted in the curriculum in order to be able to move forward? Absolutely. I, I mean, and, and that's, I think if you speak to every, as, as Elsie had mentioned, if you speak to every single school district, they're having to make the necessary adjustments to be able to accommodate this. There are things that the teachers are having to boil down to the core essential standards that need to get taught, that are expected from, you know, a Regents perspective. We have teachers that teach college-level and AP courses that have to align their curriculum to what the expectations are on the college level. And they're having to maintain those standards. You know, that being said, who knows what's going to be in store for, you know, with the Regents exams? They canceled it in January because they said that the only way that they're going to be able to administer the Regents exams
in a truly equitable way is to have all students take them in person because that's not going to happen for January. They, I think, I think we just lost Mrs. Rodriguez. Uh, we, we, oh, she's back on again. They, they canceled the Regents exams because the only way that they're going to be able to administer them is they're, they're not, they can't do them in a remote environment. They're going to have to administer them in person. Who knows what's going to be in store for, for the exams in June? So we're, we're certainly doing everything that we possibly can to maintain that, you know, that, that level of curriculum. But again, as, as Elsie said, being mindful of the, the, the toll that it takes on our kids. And, and that's, that's something that we absolutely have to balance is what are the teachers able to accomplish in the classroom? And what is the level of expectation that we are, that we are putting on our kids in this current environment? I think that that's something that we, we are constantly trying to balance.
Okay, thank you. Can, and is it possible to address about the, the 10 hours of the, the prep for the week now also?
So I, I'm on, I don't think that it's, they get 10 hours of prep because when you look at the schedule, Eric, I think you have it in front of you. There is, there is, they're working with our students, right? The only, the only time is, yeah, I guess it is, but, but there is work going on because some people are meeting with their students beforehand. Like I will tell you that I met with the special ed directors, they're going to be working ahead of time with the students. So, so using that flexibility to work with students more one-on-one. So it, it's, it's a combination of, of prep time for them, but it's also a, it's an opportunity for them to meet with their students if they need to on a one-to-one.
Right. And, and also the, the, the shift that we did previously in Mondays going from synchronous Mondays to asynchronous Mondays. Now Mondays are going to go back to being instructional. So rather than having the check-in times on Mondays and having the teachers prepping on the remainder of the day on a Monday, they now have synchronous time, the, the one through nine abbreviated synchronous schedule on Mondays. And they have the time before school or after school. Because again, at, at the, at the middle school and the high school level, it's, it's one way. At the elementary level, it's, it's, it's a little bit different. The time is before school or after school for them to be able to do that prep work as well.
So even with that abbreviated schedule, then with the later start time, if they have a question, they could reach out to their teacher to get help in the morning? Is that what you're meaning?
Those opportunities absolutely exist. Sure.
Okay.
And, and again, and, and at the, at the middle level, remember there, we are, we've still been, we've been operating the AM classes at the middle school level all throughout this, you know, all of the, the music ensembles and all of the classes that meet before school at the middle school are all still going to continue to operate the same way that they've been scheduled in the past.
Did Dawn want to say something?
Okay, Dawn?
I do want to say something and I'm not really sure how coherent I'm going to be because my thoughts are kind of all over the place, but I want to touch on a few things that a few have said, going back to what, what Elsie and Eric talked about with the reopening task force. There were many different, you know, facets of that task force. There was the SEL, there was transportation, there was special education, there was ENL, there was, you know, CNI. Within each of those task force, we had, you know, portion of the, the school community, we had teachers, we had staff, we had board members, we had students, we had parents, we had support staff. So we did take the, into account a lot of different scenarios. So I do want to speak a little bit on behalf of the parents that I've heard from that are for this change. And I don't want to say change because it was articulated back in the beginning. I do agree that, you know, it, it could have been discussed more throughout the process to just kind of remind people, but I don't think it was our fallback plan. I think that this was the plan, like going forward. So there are a lot of people that have reached out to me both ways. So I just think it's equally important to share the opinions of those that have said that they looked for this, they, they welcome this, that they are a little discouraged with the screen time and with the amount of time that their children are spending and through no fault of their own, some of them chose remote and I don't think that they should be penalized for that either because of their circumstances. So their home and, and their children are in front of the computer screen for the whole time. And then they're also doing homework. So it was getting a lot. We were hearing that from students. I think really from all of our stakeholders. So again, I'm not sharing my personal opinion, but I do want to, you know, speak about the parents that have reached out to me and the students to say that they understand the frustration on some of their, their community members and their neighbors, but they also feel equally as strong that this is something that, that they welcome, you know, students and parents. So I don't want to devalue the work of the reopening task force either. And I know that, you know, there was some comments made about maybe, you know, the cabinet just goes forward. I personally feel that, you know, a lot of time and effort went into that, you know, I put a lot of time and effort into that for the social emotional task force. I chaired that. And I think that a big component of that committee was that we want to make sure that our, our children are not overwhelmed. Like we're in a global pandemic. Do we all want to be back to normal and back in school five days a week? Yes, of course we do. But this is not the reality right now. So I think it's just finding that happy balance that would make, you know, teachers, staff, the administrators, the board, the, the students. I don't know if it's possible because we're in a global pandemic to please everybody. We're always going to have that, you know. But I, I, again, I do want to be fair to the people that have reached out to me to say that they are on the opposite side of, of this. So.
And, and I want to echo, I, I do want to echo what Dawn is saying. I've had the same thing. I've had people email me and say, thank you. We, we think this is a great plan. Other people who say we don't necessarily think this is a great plan. So I am going to disagree with you, Dan. I don't think that it should be a cabinet decision because we don't make decisions in a vacuum. We really do make decisions with all the stakeholders. Because this isn't about me and it's not about us, it's about the students and it's about what's best for them. And I think that, you know, circling back to Anthony Anderson's question, is this something that we can discuss and look at? The answer is yes, and we will certainly go back and do that. But at this point, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the board stance is. I'm not recommending that we change what we're doing in the next two weeks. The email was sent out to everybody. And we've, this is what we planned. So I'm not going to make that recommendation, but you as the board, if you feel like you need to change that, then that's something that you should, you, it should be discussed. But I think at this point, what we should, what we should do is Eric can go back and reconvene some of the members of the committee, the same people that were on the committee and go back and reevaluate what we're doing. But I just want to say again, this is what we agreed upon and this is what we discussed. Obviously I didn't have the foresight to know exactly what happened, what was going to happen during this pandemic. We had a lot of different options. And this was an option that we talked about. We said if we were going to be on an extended closure district-wide, this would be our fallback. Now we're saying, and there's nothing wrong with that. Now we're saying, well, why don't we take a look at this? Because maybe there is another way and, and, and I just, and I feel, and this is again, this, I'm just one person. I feel like if that's going to be changed, then we should sit down and include all of the important stakeholders who worked a lot this summer. You know, I, I, I have to say that, like, there were a lot of people who spent a lot of time this summer doing this work.
Can I ask, how many people are on that task force?
Probably a little over a hundred.
I'm sorry, we just went through a whole political season and, and I, I'm sorry to tell you, that sounds like a political response. We're going to go back to our committee of a hundred people. I think that that's ridiculous. We do need to make some decisions as a board and as a cabinet. And we can get some input through the various members of this board and cabinet of what the people on that extended task force say. But to say we're going to go back to a committee of a hundred people.
Well, I didn't, I didn't necessarily, so Anthony, I didn't say that we were going to go back to a hundred people. Some of those people have moved on. They're no longer here and not that they passed away or anything. They've moved, literally moved on. But I do think that you can get a core group of people to go back and, and again, I'm not political. I'm simply saying that I value the stakeholders who were part of this decision. And I think that if we're going to come back to the committee, and I'm not saying a hundred and one people, that's first of all, that would take way too much time. Remember, we did that in the summer. We did that over several months.
And a hundred and one included every single member of the task force, which was also like the health and safety group, the transportation group. The learning group was 30 and change and then, and the SEL.
And I think that you could, you can include, I'm sorry, Anthony, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. But, but to Dan's point, that, what the job of that task force was done. That was for the reopening. Now we're at a different point and at a different state and we've got to reevaluate and determine what's best. I, I'm sure there are people that think that this plan is, is good moving forward, but I haven't heard any. I, I know you said you have, everyone that comes to me says they need more time. Whether it be in school, we all want to back in school or more screen time. And the feeling is that this is somehow a reduction, especially by the secondary school. Because when they've had off the last few weeks, they just continued along the same hybrid schedule that they had, except they would, they were tuning in remotely.
Correct.
Oh, now it's, we're backing up. And, and I, and I have to say, if that was working, I really think we should get together and look at whether that is the way to move forward. Plus, I would even add on Mondays.
But listen, everything, my feeling is that we have lived through this pandemic in schools for the past four months, right? We've learned a lot, right? There are things that we didn't know moving, starting this school year. And we have always said, I don't know, somebody kind of quoted me, which said, you know, you have reevaluate things. Absolutely. You know, we were always reevaluating and, and the focus for me in reevaluating things is to make things better for our students. Right? To make sure that teaching and learning is going on. And so what I'm saying is we're not going to go back to a hundred and one people. I, I don't think that we could do that. But I do think that there could be a group of people that Dr. Hassler can meet as well as board members who were a part of the committee and anybody else who wants to be a part of that. And we can certainly take a look at what our options are. Does that make sense?
But Elsie, when you said, we'll go, you, you don't mean just the CNI, the curriculum instruction piece of it. You mean looking at the whole, the whole, all the pieces, right?
Like, like, for example, we're not, we don't need to reconvene the transportation department because this is not a transportation issue. This is not a, this is really more about curriculum and instruction and social emotional, which we said was one of our priorities. So yes, that would be, in my opinion, that would be the two groups that you would get together and you would, you would involve them. I would also, we had a doctor that was part of that committee. We had school psychologists that were part of that committee. So I, I think that we should, you know, we should certainly take a look at that. We are, we always want to do what's best for kids. I, I hope that you know that. And, and also to support our staff, right? Because they're the front, I call them the people who, they're the ones that are doing the work with the students. And we want to create an environment where teaching and learning really happens. And kids are learning.
And it's crucial that we, we recognize both of those pieces, right? Actually more. I mean, it's the families, it's the students, it's the staff, it's the teachers, it's the administrators, like there's a lot of different components here and there's a lot of work that went into, and, and I'm not, again, I'm just saying that the reopening plan and the way that I viewed it was not just to open our doors, it was how we were going to get through this global pandemic. And if this was what, what the reopening committee felt was necessary, then I, I, we didn't have discussions about it then. Like at some point, we knew we were going to be in this position, right?
I'm just surprised it took us this, be honest, I'm, I'm surprised. I'm thrilled.
And maybe that's, maybe it's because we did get so far into the year that we kind of were gaining a false sense of security that things were going to continue in that. I, I just, again, like, I, I just, I know that you say, you don't hear from, you know, I hear from a lot of the students also because of the different, you know, roles that I'm in and they were getting a little burned out and, and I'm, I just think I like the plan of reevaluating and speaking to the, to the committee. I think it also gives them some, some value in the work that they put in.
I'll chime in now. Let me lower my hands because I've, I listened to everything and I actually sat on that committee this past summer with Dr. Hassler. So, and I look at it now that I'm thankful that we're going to reevaluate because while I can agree with a little bit of everything that was said, I, I speak from the parental side of things as well where I know that my biggest concern was the instruction time. So I'm at least thankful to hear that hopefully we aren't losing where my child who sits in the seat at Monroe Woodbury is going to be behind a student who perhaps sits in Pine Bush, Minnesick, Newburgh, Middletown, whatever district you want to plug into that. Because that, that is a concern of mine. And I will say that that has been a concern that has come my way from community members and parents. Similar to the other individuals that spoke, I haven't had anybody who's been happy with the plan. Although I do know that most people come out to complain, not necessarily to, to support. So that could be one of the reasons. It could be one of the reasons in all fairness. I understand that that part of the plan was that we were going back to that, but I agree almost to what Dawn said that shame on me, I guess, even as a member who sat on the committee and as a board member and as a parent, but I don't think that I thought that we would completely go back to those two weeks either. For the simple fact that we have made such progress, we are live synchronous learning now. Everybody has devices, knock wood, the internet is holding up. And I feel that similar to what I think Anthony had said in the beginning, that we've had instances throughout the district where our students have had to either self-quarantine or the building itself was shut down and they were home for extended periods of time where the instruction didn't stop. So for my high school students, they were on the computer from seven to two. Again, it is not ideal. I want my kids back in the building five days a week. I don't want them sitting in front of the computer all day. But I also don't know how I feel about the every other day schedule because my fear with that is I don't want them to have the pressure of having to do an assignment that's assigned to them and basically teach it to themselves. And, and I don't mean any disrespect to that, to teachers at all. I just mean that that's a concern in my house that will they have the guidance that they need to be able to make their way through the curriculum with whatever assignment is being assigned. And that's why I just feel the live instruction is, is the best, whether it's on screen all day or in person. In person is obviously best. So, I mean, I think at this point, we've gotten to a discussion where from November 30th until, forgive me, because I don't know the date in December off the top of my head, we're going to go ahead with this. But I think it is important that we, we can sit down together as a cabinet, sit down together as a board and perhaps rethink things and, and with Dr. Hassler, maybe reach out to some of the other stakeholders to get some more input as to how things will work. So I mean, I know we have a workshop coming up on December 2nd. I know that we've got another public meeting in, in the middle of December, but I know that that'll be after our, our official, hopefully in-person return. So I'm hoping though, that at least out of this meeting, we've come to that conclusion that we can hopefully sit down and just kind of reevaluate the fully remote plan moving forward perhaps after the first of the year is basically what I'm saying. Yes?
I, I agree. I can in good conscience advocate a change for December at this point. Families have made plans, families have made childcare arrangements, families have adjusted because the, uh, we've put this out there to the public. So for the two weeks following Thanksgiving, all the way up to, to the Christmas break or the winter recess, I would say what, what's been put in place should have to stay. I would encourage that along with the stakeholders, anybody who is listening, aware of this meeting on Facebook, finding this, please email Dr. Hassler your thoughts on how things are going, whether you're happy or unhappy. Sorry, Doc. I think that along with Anthony, when we did the committee, it is a small fraction of the family members of the district. If we did a hundred people, we have what? 7,000 students? We're looking at, at, it's got to be 12, 15,000 families. We're, we're looking at a fraction. All right? We have employees in the district, parents in the district, all right, people from all areas. I think that if people do have concerns, all right, because maybe Stacy said, the complainers just reached out to me. All right, and, and the people who are happy are just sitting silently at home and that's fine. All right, and I could be completely off base with this. Please email, call, reach out, contact and voice your opinions either way. The more input we can get from the stakeholders, the more we can create a plan going forward that fits the needs of the larger part of the community, whether it's continuing what's in place, whether it's making changes, however it may be.
So I'm sorry, are we agreeing to reevaluate something that hasn't happened yet? Like we don't even know how the plan is going to work for those two weeks or what the feedback's going to be from, from that pause. So are we officially deciding right now that we are going to look to do something different before we have a chance to see how it works out?
I think we did it already in the beginning of the year when we had the students on the A day, B day schedule. I think the families are well versed on how that works and how much time they're in front of the screen and, and the, the type of education they're getting. And I think they, they know that already. Um, and you know, as, we're going back to the beginning.
Yeah, the raise your hand thing's not working. So, um, let me offer a suggestion is that we don't end the committee. It's called an agile process. That's a new word. It's called an agile process, that's a new word. The three people watching can look up, but what it means is we constant, we keep the committee open. We look for constant improvement. Once the committee agrees, this might improve, then the committee recommends it to the board, to the, to the cabinet. And we use a, a model, it's called agile, where we constantly improve it. This way, as we learn, we can introduce new things. It's not this start a committee, end the committee. We're, we're in a constant changing model, so who knows what's gonna work? We might even recommend something, and two weeks later we say, ah, that didn't really work that well. So I, I would recommend that we form the committee, keep it open, and as the committee sees opportunities to improve our process, we make a recommendation, we vote on it, and we just think of it in terms of constant improvement. This way, we don't have to get into, hey, we need to form a new committee, we need to look at the, it, if we see something, hey, this might work, let's try it. If it doesn't work, we don't, we don't continue to use it. I mean, it's, to me, it's, I think, the simplest approach.
But Dawn, when you say form a committee, we have a committee, right?
That's fine, whatever, I'm not saying change that. I'm saying, instead of, it, it, and maybe I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like we're thinking, we had a plan, that's what we're doing. We can stick with the current plan, have the committee constantly look at opportunities to improve the process, and if they come, if they come up with a, a suggestion to improve what we're currently doing, then we use that. It, to me, it's not that complicated, right?
Everything's complicated right now.
No, because you, from a, from an operational standpoint, we don't have to worry about ripping it apart, cha, you know, going back to anything.
But we're also, you know, again, like, the focus for me is on, on the students and their social emotional needs, just as much as their academic needs.
But that, that is operational, Dawn. Me, when I say operational, I don't mean the school. I mean, the students, they have an operational, you know, we're talking about everyone involved that's operational. Right? For the parents, I, I view their thing, they have to make plans, they have to go to work. They, there's all kinds, they have an operational plan too. So it, we have to evaluate these things, and until we agree on them, we stick with what we have, and if we feel that a change is warranted, then we introduce that plan and let the public have an opportunity to voice opinions as well as the board. And then if we think that change is gonna improve, we, we try it.
Okay, thank you. Any other last minute comments, or are we good to move on? And we'll, we'll start to just move forward with the agenda?
Can I, can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry, I apologize. So part of, um, Dr. Gelman's, um, strong recommendations also included extracurricular and athletics. So I think it's really important for me to talk a little bit about, the plan was for us to go back to, to start our, our, um, winter sports in, on, on November thirtieth. But because all of the schools in Orange County are now going to be on remote, that date is no longer, uh, the date that we're gonna start. So I just wanna make everybody aware that Orange County, the superintendents of Orange County met today. Um, we voted to, um, move the start of sports to January nineteenth. But that, we are only one part of section nine, so there's gonna be another vote. And I just wanted to make sure that people whose, whose children, um, are in sports, that that November thirtieth date is no longer the date that we're going to use, more than likely, because most of our schools are closed. So I just wanted to make everybody aware, I will, even though if we're on break and a decision is made, Carol is aware, she'll put something on the, on, on our website. But I did wanna, I did wanna mention this, because we're talking about only academics, but there is an athletic portion and sports portion to this, uh, closure as well, to this just being, uh, remote.
So everybody, everybody's gonna witness something unfolding live as we speak. So Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question for you. Is, is that, is that both the higher, the high risk and the low and moderate risk groups? There was this.
Why do you have to ask me hard questions? Why do you have to ask me hard questions?
Not the, at the, because I think people are gonna wanna know, like, the, there was a two, there was two start dates, November thirtieth and then January fourth for the two, two groups.
Right, so what, so what they're saying was.
Is both groups.
Correct, and what we're, yes, we're looking at the nineteenth, because even though section nine is not only Orange County, it goes into Dutchess and it goes into Ulster. There are several other groups that we need to vote on this. So I just, and Orange County is in that precarious situation where we're asked to go remote. So based on her letter to us, it specifically talks about sports and athletics and extracurricular activities. And so we need to be mindful of that as well. So that the nineteenth, it's not set in stone, but that is the recommendation of the Orange County, um, superintendents, because of the fact that we are closed. So it doesn't make any sense to start sports when we're remote right now. That, that's the piece that I wanted to share.
So will there be an update then, um, perhaps from, um, Lori in the athletic department with the modified schedule that will look to go forward? Starting with that January nineteenth date, because now whatever we had up there is, is not gonna, I'm, I'm guessing that they're gonna consolidate seasons again, correct?
We, it's very possible. I think what's happening though is that unfortunately, people are leery to make any decisions, and they'd rather have the decision come from, you know, people who are in a higher position, like, like possibly the governor. But, but we can't, my argument is, I can't continue to wait and wait and not let my students know that November thirtieth isn't going to happen right now. It's, it's probably more than likely going to get postponed. So yes, as soon as I get the information, I, I did speak with Lori Hock today, and we agreed, whichever person hears first, we will then let Carol know, we'll post it, and we'll put that information out for our families.
Elsie, has Bosse's decided their holiday pause plan?
Their plan is, is right now the first two weeks like us. That's their plan. And one of the things that I did do was for any students in the district um, whose children attend other programs, and if those other programs were open, because there are, some of our students go to out-of-district placements like in Rockland and in Westchester, if they were open, then we would transport the children there, and I did share that information with them. Um, so, so yes, they're, they're, they're just like us, they're, they're on remote, they reverted to remote for two weeks. So C-Tech and all of the, their Bosse's programs are on the same schedule as us. The plan for us is to come back for in-person learning for a week and a half. And I'm, and I'm really hoping that we do that, because I think it would really be good for our students.
I'm sorry, I have one more question then for the athletic piece. Do you know when the other, um, superintendents in the section are going to make a decision? Because won't this ultimately, even with the new gameplay schedule that let's say gets released, won't this now impact us playing those other schools if they do not, if they do not stick to the January nineteenth date?
Correct, so that's, that's why the vote is very important. So that's why the vote is happening, I believe it's happening next Monday. There is a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, so I will keep you posted. But yes, that's, that's the big question, right? Orange County is saying, look, we're in a position where we're being told that we need to be remote. Ulster County is saying, but we're not. So, so there's a little bit of, of, of a concern, but when you read Dr. Gelman's letter, she basically is saying, this is not gonna be only Orange County, it's Orange County now, but it may be other counties later on. So it's really important for the other counties to realize that it's just a matter of time for them as well. But as soon as I get the information, it'll, we'll, we'll know, hopefully by next Monday at the latest, we'll make sure that we've posted that information. If they take a vote and we know tomorrow, then we will get you that information. And just so that you know, we have, our representative is Mr. Monahan. He represents us when they go to the section nine meetings. And so he has expressed where we are. Um, and so there, they will take a vote.
Okay, and do you think that the, uh, announcement that came, I believe it was last week, out of the federal government with the CDC and pediatrics and everybody about them telling states and districts that they should not close, will have an impact perhaps in Orange County at some point?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think that, that one of the things that Dr. Gelman does is she looks at the specific data, you know, for Orange County. And when you look at the numbers, that's why she's saying what she's saying. One of the things that she referenced, and, and I just wanna make a point of that, is that she saw a surge in the aftermath of the Halloween parties and the social gatherings. And so she used that as a preliminary indicator, and this is the words that she uses, not my words. The tidal wave of cases expected after Thanksgiving and the winter holiday breaks are, are off the charts. That, that is her concern, right? That we took a look at the, the, the surges that we had after Ho, um, Halloween, and there's a greater concern that those surges will be even bigger after Thanksgiving and after, um, the winter break.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Dawn? You still have a raised hand, is that just from, I'm trying, I'm trying to pay attention to those, so.
No, I'll load them, sorry.
Okay, so if nothing else, then I'll go ahead and move on. Um, I'm moving on to a resolution, and I'm sorry, I just wanna pull it up here on my screen. So we have, um, a resolution to regarding the rescinding of furlough of one-to-one monitors for the dates of November thirtieth, twenty twenty, and twelve, seven, twenty twenty. So whereas that due to COVID nineteen and the recommendation of the commissioner of the Orange County Department of Health to urge all school districts over the upcoming holiday season, November to January, to consider reverting to a remote instruction model. And whereas, based upon the recommendation of the commissioner of the Orange County Department of Health, the district has altered its delivery of instruction to students.
That's what I can get.
Whereas, due to the change in its delivery of instruction to students, the district will utilize the one-to-one monitors from November thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and December seventh, two thousand and twenty. And now therefore be it resolved, those M W E A unite, unit, excuse me, unit members with the title of one-on-one monitor shall be utilized to assist their students with remote live instruction and will no longer be subjected to a furlough on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, or December seventh, twenty twenty. Are there any questions about that? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, aye, let me just type, sorry. Okay, um, okay, all good, Donna? Okay. Um, next we have, um, the resolution regarding C S E A grievance. Um, Matt, is there anything that you need to speak about with any of this, or should I just go ahead?
No, no, I think you can just go ahead and, and read them.
Okay. Sorry, I just have to like click to another tab here. Okay, so here we have, so be it resolved that the Board of Education herewith denies grievance zero nine zero one two zero two zero filed by the C S E A dated September first, two thousand twenty, and directs the district clerk to notify the C S E A. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Donna, it's good. Okay, next one. Be it resolved that the Board of Education herewith denies grievance one one zero three two zero two zero filed by the C S E A dated November third, two thousand twenty, and directs the district clerk to notify the C S E A. Do we have any questions about this? May I get a motion, I'm sorry, Suzanne, do you have a question? You have to unmute yourself, please. I see you, Suzanne, but you have to unmute.
Oh, I know, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
My question was on both grievances, what exactly is the grievance saying?
So I don't know if Mr. Kravitz wants to take that, but it was, it was sent to us, but I'll let Mr. Kravitz go ahead and, and, and speak.
Sure, the, the first grievance dealt with, um, the opening of school and, um, people getting paid to, or, or basically the, how their time was spent um, doing particular tasks during the first two weeks, uh, or the reopening of school. The second one, uh, is largely regarding the, the furloughing that was done for, for drivers uh, at a previous board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted, okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, um, to Patrick, please. For the settlement agreement, is there anything that you wanna say, Patrick, in regards to that?
I had sent a few board grams regarding this to the board, and, uh, this is an agreement we worked on to essentially avoid potential, uh, litigation, breach of contract issues uh, in the future with our, our bus contractors, student bus.
Okay, yes, thank you, we all did receive that. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, may I get a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the second agreement, um, settlement offer, Patrick, do you wanna discuss that one a little bit?
Yeah, actually, what I'd like to recommend, Stacy, is, is that we postpone that. Uh, that is not a finalized agreement, it's, it's rather a proposed settlement agreement.
Okay.
And, and so what we're really seeking was just consensus that the board with that, we had sent, uh, a settlement agreement document to the board, I've written about it in a few different, um, board grams. So it's, it's, uh, it's really not necessary to approve it at this time until we're, we have a finalized document and finalized agreement.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's the Turk, the tax sociary case that we've had for, I don't know how many years.
Ten, ten years.
Yeah, I think it was ten years, okay. Okay, does the board have any questions about any of that? Cause we did receive all that information also, so I don't know if anybody reached out to Patrick, or you have any questions? Okay, so there's no reason then to take a motion yet, correct, Donna? I, okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so I think that's it. May I get a motion to adjourn into, um, executive session to discuss the discipline of a particular employee?
Motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And to all the board members, please check your email now, as Ms. Petucci will be sending you the separate link to get into that meeting. So go ahead and log off of this, and then we'll log into that meeting. And everybody have a great night and a happy Thanksgiving.